Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the February meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees meeting. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge and then remain standing following the pledge for a moment?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all aware of the travesty that happened in Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Seventeen students went to school yesterday and seventeen families didn't have them come home, is the latest number that I have heard, so I would appreciate it if we'd have a moment of silence for the families and victims of Douglas High School. Thank you very much. Next item is the roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Leese?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Jared Foster, Dennis Batliner, Cheryl Batliner, Julie Sovereign, Olivia Sovereign, Blake Koger, Justin Wrigley, Mike Wallace, Nick Cole, Josh Sovereign, Melody Rell, Val Ball, and Roberta Eva Slage.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the open forum, and the open forum is a section of the board agenda, is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium. They should be respectful and civil and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise a subject of review by the college or board. Tonight, we have nine registered speakers. Seven of them, I believe, have indicated they would like to speak to the track issue. As a result of having seven in that category, I'm going to limit your comments to four minutes tonight rather than five. I apologize if I didn't get you in the order of registration, but I'll take them as I have them, and the first is Dennis Batliner. So again, if you would state your name and your address and limit your remarks to four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Batliner, 10,000 Perry Drive, Overland Park, Kansas, 66212. As we have been forced to dig deeper into the details behind the decision to rid the college of a successful track and cross-country program with a 32-year history, we have been examining documents obtained through the Kansas Open Records Request. The more we learn from these documents about this decision, the less it makes sense. Though it has been claimed that the general public has known about this decision since March, the fact is, we really first heard about it on December of 2017 when KSHB-TV shined a spotlight on the issue. One rationale given at that time was that the Jayhawk Conference rule change, which makes it optional for schools in the Jayhawk Conference to offer more scholarship funding to student athletes, including room and board. But let us make no mistake, on October 20th of 2016, JCC voted in favor of this change. And let the record be clear to the public, this rule change was already being used as a rationale on March 3rd of 2017 before the change was permanently ratified on April 20th of 2017. It was ratified then with a vote of 12 to 7, with JCC again voting in favor. What reason might have been provided if just three more schools had voted no instead of yes? Regardless, the change does not require additional spending to remain competitive. It is well-known by those throughout the NJCAA that JCC athletic programs are already amongst the most heavily funded in the nation. Additionally, other Jayhawk Conference schools are on record, they will remain competitive without additional funding. Certainly, JCC, which is already well-funded, can do the same. JCC has typically had around 55 student athletes in the programs, not the 37 athletes that were mentioned at last month's meeting, which resulted because of the programs being cut. The programs were just cut, not because of a rule change, not because of required funding increases. So why? It's becoming apparent, this is a leadership and management issue where a few people made an administrative decision with no public input and were then forced to make post-hoc justifications that don't make any sense. This is the largest community college in Kansas with $150 million budget, that's spending $103 million on new facilities, 50 million of which endettes all of Johnson County citizens for 20 years, and that happened without a public vote. How can JCC receive an additional 8% in property tax revenue this year, but they can't afford to running programs with 32-year histories that have been established and supported by past administrations, board members, and tax revenue over the 50-year history of the college? When putting all of this together, it just does not make sense to me that the individuals involved in this decision could not come up with a way to keep these programs in place for current and future student athletes. This is a terrible way to go into JCC's 50th anniversary year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Batliner. Next is Olivia Sovereign.
Olivia Sovereign, 8143 Acuff Lane, Lenexa, Kansas, 66215. Hello, I'm a junior at St. Thomas Aquinas High School and I run cross-country and track. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will be speaking on behalf of the destruction of the beloved track here at Johnson County Community College. As a member of St. Thomas Aquinas Track and Cross Country Teams, I have spent hundreds of hours at the JCC track alongside my entire team. As you know, my school pays for our use of the track and we have an active interest in keeping it around. Nowhere else will you find a team so unbelievably dedicated to a sport. I attended the January meeting of trustees where it was mentioned that there was a lack of high-caliber athletes training on your track, but I could not disagree more. I personally have spent thousands of hours running workouts here over the past six years and that number continues to grow. I'm a back-to-back cross-country 5A Kansas Individual State Champion and a 1,600-meter runner-up at the Track and Field 5A Kansas State Meet. I was named the All-Metro Kansas Runner of the Year and Kansas Girls' Cross Country Gatorade Player of the Year. My teammate, Ethan Marshall, also a junior, was the 2017 Cross Country 5A Kansas Individual State Champion. He was named All-Metro Kansas Runner of the Year and Kansas Boys' Cross Country Gatorade Player of the Year. This is the first time in state history that a boy and girl from the same high school were named the Gatorade Players of the Year for cross-country, and this is where we train. Over the last three years, our track team has had 5A Individual State Champions for track and field in the 3,200-meter, 1,600-meter, 110-meter, and 300-meter hurdles, the 100-meter dash, and long jump. Some of the best high school athletes in the state use this track as a base for our training to get to the next level. It could be argued that there is not another track in the state of Kansas that reaches the same level of high-caliber talent. A number of students at St. Thomas Aquinas are enrolled here at JCC through the College Now program, including a sizable amount of athletes from our track team. As it was mentioned in the January meeting, the students of JCC were asked about the track and a considerable amount of them agreed that it didn't matter what happened to it, but it would seem that the high school students simultaneously enrolled here were not given a say in the matter. So if the students are using it, then why tear it down? What I propose is to leave the track as is. The school would be spared the expense of getting rid of it and it would still be open for the public to use. If the school wanted to bring the track program back in years to come, it would still be an option without building a brand-new facility. If there are already plans for the land currently held by the track, there is a tremendous amount of open green space on the east side of the campus that could be used as a replacement. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today about something I feel very strongly about. I hope you consider what I said today and take to heart the importance of this track to the community of Johnson County.
Thank you, Ms. Sovereign. Appreciate it. Jared Foster.
My name is Jared Foster, 914 Southwest Over Road, Belton, Missouri. I'm the head track and field coach at Raypack High School. Some of my history, I ran track here out of high school. I was a kid that, I got good grades, but I had dyslexic and I had to work for everything I had. I was offered more football scholarships and I came to the school and took a tour and was not offered money, but I saw what you guys had to offer me academically. And I had a lot of assistance in the learning center, people reading tests to me. Now I'm a teacher, a coach, finished my special at Arkansas State and plan on pursuing my doctorate. So it hits a little hard that I went from maybe not going to college to where I am today. I've currently sent close to a dozen athletes to school here. Many of those are athletes and kids that I've taught that had the same background that I had, and I saw the opportunities I had here. They've ranged from state champions to kids that didn't even make it to state but came here and became All-Americans here. I now coach with many of those that are around in the Kansas City area. One of the other coaches I coach with is a graduate here. He had to do something for his doctor tonight and he shared the same story and said, "If it wasn't for the opportunities I had here and getting the invite there, I wasn't going to college and no one else called me." I just can't say enough about who I am today and where I came from, came from this. When I went on, I went on to a four-year university from here and I realized how much I was missing because of the opportunities this school has compared to other schools out there. This is the second time I spoke on a forum. The last time I spoke on a forum, Johnson County asked me to speak to a group of teachers that were working with kids with disabilities, to try to give them advice, to tell them what options are out there for kids that may have struggled, the same way to let them know that there's options and college can be for you. And so, speaking on that panel, I respected it as much as you guys were, but there was 100 teachers there. So I was a little nervous, but then after that, I ended up talking to teachers and then that's some of what drew me into education. But through talking to that, I've now spoken to close to 100 different high schools and went and talked to those kids and let them know, there's options out there, you can get help, you just gotta be willing to ask and look for it. And this is a place that, if I didn't come here to tour and look at the track, I would not have seen or discovered everything you guys had to offer. And I thank you for that, but I just ask that you reconsider this because you do touch a lot of lives.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate it. Blake Koger.
All right, Blake Koger, 248-53, West 148th Court, Alatha, Kansas. Blake Koger, appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak with you all again about this issue. So far, we've heard some amazing stories tonight and I'm really glad people chose to join us and speak on this cause because it really is important and I hope that that's eventually getting across to everyone. So it's not that we didn't start this process earlier, we did. You know, we've been talking for over a month now with you all. Brian reached out, you know, at the beginning of last spring and we kind of didn't get a lot of response, we were kind of shut down. So I think what we really needed was some momentum. I think we needed to show the support, we needed to show those around us that support this 32-year-old program. It's important to a lot of us, you know, we've had over 1,000 people indicate that they're going to join us on the Walk the Track event on March 10th, and we'll be getting many more over the next couple of weeks. So one of the things I think we need to make sure that we're clear on is that we support the efforts of the college to adjust programs, to review and adjust programs, facilities, staffing, and much more. That's not in dispute, that's obviously part of your purview, especially when you have a couple of things. One, detailed and extensive evaluations of those programs with the data to back it up. And two, a focus on the larger community impact that those programs have as it relates to challenges of today and tomorrow. So with that, I wish that every dollar you spent here at the college was 100% traceable and tied directly back to some return on investment. Realize ROIs can be hard to track, there's a lot of intangibles, you can't analyze everything immediately upfront and then see the later return on that investment. I get it, totally understand. I am curious, as an interested party in this track effort, as well as a Johnson County taxpayer, how we're evaluating the $103 million master facilities plan? How directly do those investments improve the college? Grow enrollment numbers that you said have stagnated for over 10 years. How does that significant investment really put the college's best foot forward? I wish every decision could be analyzed to that detail and shared with the public without us having to go to extreme efforts to find that. So, you know, some of those are easier to identify, I realize, understand that, but would like to see that as it relates to the track and field program. Along those lines, I'm sure many of you are aware of that decision and the data behind it, so I would ask that you share it with us. The case of the 32-year-old program that you chose to cut, I think the benefits far outweigh the investment. I think if we look past, you know, it's not going to provide a return, none of our athletics provide return here. But you look at the community impact, you look at the impact of lives that you've heard here today before on our website, the sport is uniquely able to provide these benefits and the school is uniquely positioned to be an innovator in that sport. Brian Batliner, part of our group, recently wrote a fantastic article on our website about the vision that this program could have, its community impact if we had the support that it deserves. And we accept blame on some of that, too. We should have been supporting the program earlier than now. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, is we're here now. So this innovative history that Brian mentioned isn't unique to Johnson County. Orville Gregory and Barbara Gill have a unique history at this school. Orville created the first NJCAA women's basketball tournament here at Johnson County and was an athletic director for many years. By the time he left, he had 10 national caliber programs. He understood the importance of quality physical education. Barbara Gill created the fitness and wellness program in the JCC curriculum. Despite the odds being stacked against her, in August of 1987, you guys opened the college's fitness center.
Lincoln, I could ask you to sum up.
Yep, yep. So all of these innovative minds is what we need today, this innovative thought leadership. So I'll close by asking you that the elected officials in this room that you work with us, join us tonight in this innovative spirit. Help us come to a solution to this problem, to save this historic program, and innovate other programs in the best interest of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Koger. If I remember, in January, you came and said that you were kind of nervous getting up in front of a group to speak. And you're getting really good at it. Mike Wallace.
Hi, my name's Mike Wallace. I live at 10318 Long Street, Overland Park, 66215. I am the head track and field coach at Alatha East High School. I actually interviewed for the Johnson County job when you gave it to Dave Burgess. I think you probably made a pretty good choice. His credentials are outstanding. I would be probably considered the elder statesman of track and field, obviously looking at my head. Track and field statesman in Johnson County, I've been a head coach for 38 years, I've been coaching track and field 42 years. The number of kids that we send, again, I have nothing prepared, so this is just all coming from the heart. The number of kids that we have sent to Johnson County to participate in track and field, I can't even give you the numbers. We had an athletic signing today at Alatha East, we had 21 student athletes sign. This is the first time I can remember, in I don't know how many years, we had nobody commit to Johnson County for track and field. I had a visit with two of my children the other day. Both of them's GPAs are not good, both of them's homeslives are not outstanding. Their options are junior college and the military. Those are their two options. With the program, and I said, "Well, you may have to look elsewhere." They wanted to come to Johnson County and run track and field. And whether they would be All-Americans, whether they'd be contributors, you know, they're probably not going to, they may not have that opportunity. I think that's a sad state of affairs because these are wonderful kids. And we've had, again, numerous kids over the years come here and participate in track and field. You know, we have actually, we have a nice facility at Alatha East, we have a very, very nice track. We have actually come and used the facility here as a state prep meet because your track is very similar to what we see at Wichita State. And folks, the head coaches prior have been kind enough, we call them, and Carl was nice enough to let us come up here and use the facility. I hate to see it go, I really do. So many positives, so many good things come from athletics and track and field. And, you know, we have 150 kids out for track and field, between 150 and 160 kids out for track and field at Alatha East. It is a good sport, it's a great program, and I would sure like to see whatever could happen to make sure that this tradition continues at Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Appreciate your time. Nick Cole.
Nick Cole, 12232 Connell Drive, Overland Park. So for the second month now, I'm here as part of the large contingent of what you now see are passionate individuals that make up the Save JCC Track Initiative. Tonight, my focus is solely on the issue of student fees and scholarships for the student athletes, since that was the number-one reason cited for cutting the track and cross-country programs provided by the board and president at last month's meeting, as well as in some open record documents that we obtained through the school. So it's well-known through the junior college world that Mr. Batliner had mentioned, that these programs are very, very well-funded. I'd like to provide an example. Maricopa Community College District down in Phoenix, Arizona, which is a system of nine community colleges that it supports, of multiple athletic programs in an urban core similar to the one we have here, actually larger, 4.5 million in Phoenix, about 2 million in Kansas City. Johnson County is in a unique position because we are the only major community college still, if you do choose to reverse the decision, with a track and cross-country program that can reach that 2-million metropolitan area. Here, we have nine out of 4.5 million. So there's a huge recruiting edge when it comes to recruiting from your home base that we have here. But comparing track programs is difficult and cross-country programs because, over the last three decades, this school and past administrations have spent numerous hours, numerous dollars, building out facilities and capabilities that we have here, an indoor and outdoor track facility and a cross-country course all on campus. No other school has that that we've ever come across. No other junior college in this country has that, and I mentioned that last month. So let's compare like programs. The women's soccer program at Paradise Valley Community College, which is part of the Maricopa District, operates at a budget of $28,000. So that includes scholarships for the year, team travel for the year, equipment for the year, and coaching stipends for the year. So let that sink in, $28,000 for their women's soccer team. By comparison, Johnson County Community College's budget is $67,000 for their women's soccer team, but that's scholarships alone. That doesn't include coaches' salaries, that doesn't include team travel, that doesn't include equipment for the year, none of it. So it's pretty easy to see that Mr. Batliner's point is validated in the exuberant amount of money that this college funds its athletic programs. So when you have coaches at Johnson County coming to administrators to say they can't compete without more scholarship money, and the administration in turn comes to the board and says, "We have to cut track and cross-country because we don't have enough scholarship money," there is a simple and reasonable response to this request. You could have said, "No, find a way." Others clearly are. Keeping a track and cross-country program in place may not boost an administrator or board member's resume the same way wrecking shiny new buildings will, and the facilities' master plan has a lot of those. But what point, but at what point did we decide it's okay to do what is wrong for the community in taking away opportunities from the people you are here to serve simply for the career benefit of a very small group of individuals? We will continue to fight this decision with the backing of enough people to make change over time until community opportunity is restored and those who are trying to remove these opportunities are no longer in a position to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. And Justin Wrigley.
Justin Wrigley, 9227 Lipton Hour Drive, Lenexa, Kansas, 66219. And I just want to speak to the idea of how much I think it's being underestimated, the impact that a track facility can have on the community here in Johnson County. Other than your own track and field coaches at Johnson County Community College, I can assure you that I have spent more time than anybody else on that track. I'm the head track and field coach in cross-country at St. Thomas Aquinas and have been so for 12 years, and I've spent a lot of time there training kids like Olivia and others. And in that time, it's not just about the relationship between St. Thomas Aquinas and Johnson County Community College and renting that facility for our team to practice, it's what I've seen during that time. Obviously, it's had a great impact on our athletes, that part's easy to figure out. But more so than winning races or winning championships, the impact that track and field can have on so many lives. It's a sport that, as you can see, brings people together. It's a lifestyle sport, it's a healthy sport. And I've, over the years, watched numerous youth teams come and go and use that as a practice facility. And while we're at practice, we sometimes, even though we're renting the facility, members of the community want to come down and work out, and we never run them off, even though we have a contract saying it's our time on the track, because it's fabulous to have retired men lacing up their spikes and working on the 100-meter dash for the health of it. We see that. We see people fresh out of college entering the career force that want to stay fit and maybe get ready for the corporate challenge. But people from the community, I assure you, are on a regular basis on that track, working out and bettering their lives and their health and their fitness. And I've seen it from very small children to retired old men and women, and whether it's walking, or running, or competing, or whatever, there's always people from the community down on that track and it's, they're going to lose that, and many, many members of the community are going to need to lose that opportunity, and so are the opportunity for lots of kids like Olivia who get involved in youth track at an early age, who then grow up to live healthy, productive lives and come to what most teenagers would probably find a boring board meeting. A person like Olivia is here taking an interest in her community and in how it affects other people, and that's what you run the risk of losing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wrigley. Appreciate it. Chris Russel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the faculty and administration, community, teachers, other students. I'm a student here. In school, I was a track runner. When I ran cross-country at the Air Force Academy, my weight was 137 pounds. Now I'm a public health nutritionist, a public health planner. I know what people die of in the U.S. and what we spend on health and medicine in the U.S. the medicine in the U.S., I should say, not on health, on medicine in the U.S. We spend about $11,000 per capita, per year, on medicine. The remedy to spending so much money is investing in health. Running, it's hard to gain, be overweight. And obesity is a major cause of diabetes, heart disease, other atherosclerosis, other dysfunctions. Besides it's being good for athletes, besides it's being good for programs, it's good for the community. It's a way of life. And I can't imagine, given what our situation in the world is, we're spending more on medicine than any country in the world. Given what our situation is, we need lifestyle change, and you remove facilities and lifestyle change goes away. One other concern related to that is we've got a great gym and great recreation facilities here. As a student, I can't use them unless I take a course. So when I went to KU this morning, I could, I went to the rec center and I spent 30 minutes before classes getting my body and mind in shape by the JCCC. I have to take a special course in order to be able to use the gym. But exercise before class, exercise aerobics with class increases intellectual performance, increases test scores. To have a great academic program, we also need to invest in great educational facilities. With the gym, a minor concern is I can get almost any, go to almost any public gym in the country for free as a Medicare Plan C participant, but I can't use the facility here. I think it would be possible, and I know it's been tried, but I think it would be possible, to enroll us in Medicare Plan C so at least the senior students, the senior citizens who are students could use the facilities. And you'd get automatic reimbursement from the federal government. Another concern is internships. My daughter graduated number-one student in chemical engineering from Georgia Tech, but she had not done an internship. And as a number-one engineering student from the number-five engineering program in the country, she could not get a job. Here, we don't have internships built into our academic programs. And international students can't even participate in them because of their work status. I'm over my time, but that is a concern, and I would like to see the college address it.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you very much. Teresa Sahar.
Hi, my name is Teresa Sahar. I'm at 13215 South Lake Shore Drive in Olathe, Kansas. And I'm here to talk about school safety. I have a student who goes here, and he takes a number of different classes, including political science and sociology classes. And we feel that the current safety situation is not conducive to free speech at the college. I would like to see Johnson County Community College be a beacon of safety in the educational system of the United States. I would like to see this college lead the way in school safety and student safety. So I know that we need to make some changes. I feel like every day when I send my son here, he is possibly in danger, especially if he expresses his political views in class. And so I would like to see some improvements in school safety, and I think this is a very valid concern considering the happenings yesterday. We don't want to be in the news as a junior college where something horrific has happened. And I would like to see my son come home from school, which he loves this school. He's having a wonderful time here. But I want him to come home safe every single day, exactly as you want your children to come home. So I would like to see some safety improvements, such as being able to be issued a bulletproof vest, possibly to be purchased in the bookstore, along with your books and your calculators. We've already purchased a number of bulletproof backpack inserts in order to make my son feel safer coming here. So I would like to see some additional safety procedures put in place for all of our students.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate your time. I guess a comment. I really appreciate all of you being here. We had seven people speak on the track issue. We've had a number of you speak on the track issue in January. As we've indicated, this is really not a forum to engage and debate and interact. And I would again ask you to, we'll take this information as trustees and work with related staff, but ask you to visit with the staff regarding that. Chris, my only comment about the usage, I belong to an early-morning Bible study, and there are about a half a dozen, maybe four people that have come up to me and said, "Thank you for allowing us to be at the college and work out early in the morning." So I'm assuming that's a communication issue when you say you're not allowed to be in there to work out. So I, again, would ask you to meet with staff. And Teresa, the same. I appreciate your remarks. We're all concerned about safety these days, concerned about where it'll be tomorrow. But I believe that our training program, the ALICE program that was referred to at the beginning of this meeting, and all the training that our staff has gone through, is one of the best in the country. But again, I would encourage you to meet with our staff regarding that issue. With that, I'm going to close the open forum and move to awards and recognitions.
I'd like to refer this portion of the meeting to Dr. Weber.
Yeah, we have two awards and recognitions tonight. We have two recipients tonight.
Yeah, one?
Yeah. Two recipients, interestingly enough, they're both in our career services area, so we're going to kind of bang them together. And I'll give a quick background here. So Carol, Linda, if you two want to come on up. Our career service has undergone a little bit of a facelift in the last couple of years. And I think the awards that we're going to recognize tonight will be able to demonstrate a little bit of that. Our first recipient is Carol Gard. And Carol has been recognized by the Kansas Association of Colleges and Employers. She's the treasurer for the association, and she has been recognized as the, her, the Member of the Year. The job that she does with them is she ensures all the bills are paid. She's our treasurer, so all registration's processed. But she's being recognized by the Kansas Association of Colleges and Employers for their Member of the Year. So Carol, thanks for your service too. Please. And our other person up here tonight is a fun, is a demonstration of collaboration and what we can do collectively. Linda Dubar is up here and been with the college for a couple of years, but in your role about a year or so, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so Linda is up here, she's been recognized on behalf of a joint effort by Kansas Board of Regents. They have what they call the Employer Engagement Initiative. And we are recognized as a champion supporter level through our local employer, three local employers, and an internship program that we have with them, Computer Impressions, LDK Lawn Service, as well as Integrity Roofing. We've had students go through there. Some of them have been hired by those internship sites. And just as a good example, Linda is receiving or accepting the award this evening, but we have a number of folks, particularly some faculty in the programs, that I think each of these students were recognized with web development. And so we appreciate the faculty in web development who have worked with Linda to make sure that our students do get some placements and some careers. So congratulations, Linda.
I would just say to both of you that thank you very much on behalf of the trustees and the college. There are a lot of people like you that work hard every day to support a system, to support an organization. And your recognition tonight really demonstrates the hard work you put in each and every day. So thank you both very, very much, and congratulations. Thank you. Next item is the Student Senate Report, Ms. Bukaima, if I said that correctly. I hope I didn't mess up the Ms. part too much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. My name is Helen Bukaima, and I am the Student Senate President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today on behalf of the Student Senate. On January 9th, Student Senator had a retreat where we discussed some ideas and initiatives that we would like to look into this semester. From a list of about 15 ideas, we narrowed it down and we chose five. The first initiative is to increase the visibility of the Student Senate. We are trying to diversify our communication channels. We started using Snapchat, and we're also trying to have more recruitment posters on campus. The PR committee would be in charge of this aspect. The second initiative is to see if the Inter Club Council is meeting the needs of clubs and organizations on campus. Inter Club and Activities Council's purpose is to provide an open means of communication for student organizations and advisors to share information with each other and help each other with projects. The Inter Club Council is also intended to provide leadership developments to club leaders. We started a survey in order to understand what clubs' expectations are and how the Inter Club Council can help them with their events and activities. The third initiative is to look into health insurance for JCCC students. Senators wanted to see if students can get health insurance through the college. As you may know, international students are required to have health insurance, and the college administers that. We discussed the option of extending the opportunity to enroll all students. We realized that a few years ago, we, some information and brochures regarding healthcare were available on campus, in addition to a student health center. We wanted to know how many students are currently insured, if they are insured through their parents' insurance, and how much they are paying. The fourth Student Senate initiative is to look into reorganizing the Student Senate to include the different academic departments on campus. The Student Senate has 30 seats, and the college has about 30, sorry, the college has about 10 academic departments. The idea is to give each department the option of a seat in the Senate. One of the reasons we think that this is worth discussion is to represent students for all the programs in the Senate. The fifth initiative is to increase the student engagement through the academic branch. Student Senate believes that learning shouldn't occur in the classroom only, but also through involvement, by being part of club, by taking part in campus activities, and by attending campus events. I would like to thank professors who encourage their students to be involved. This initiative is primarily to encourage professors to motivate their students to be more involved, because we believe that if students are involved today on campus, they will be involved tomorrow in their communities. As you can see, most of our initiatives rely on staff and faculties' help and contribution, and I would like to thank them for that. This concludes my Student Senate Report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your leadership and the aggressive agenda. You have any comments or questions anybody has? Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good luck to you. College Lobbyess Report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last month's report, I indicated that a lot, not much was going on at the legislative level as far as committee work was concerned. We've certainly made up for that this, the past few weeks. And I'd like to at least highlight a few of those bills that have been moving through the process, or at least are being talked about. But first, let me just kind of catch up a little bit on where the state is with its bank account. The end of January revenues were up $165 million, which pushes the checkbook for the state up to about $240 million. I think most of the folks that are watching the budget process are anticipating that we'll continue to see positive numbers moving up through the tax filing period in April. However, I don't think we'll see a lot of movement on the really big issue, which is school finance, until after the April consensus numbers come in. Interestingly, speaking of K-12 finance, the House and Senate both contracted with a consultant to examine K-12 finance, look at the studies that have been done over the past 20 years, and update those numbers with respect to inflation. That consultant is going to give a midway report on the first week of March, kind of right after the turnaround period, when the legislators come back after their brief break at the end of February. There's a lot of unknowns about what that study may say. I think initially, some folks thought that maybe with the adjustment for inflation, that things would be, that would look fairly good after the significant investment that was made by the legislature last year. I think that conversation could be turning a little bit, and some folks are worried that the number could be larger than what the large number that the governor suggested in his State of the, Governor Brownback suggested in his first State of the State speech of around 600 million. The other piece that plays into this mix, although there's no bill out there yet, but when we're talking about revenue to the state, is a conversation that's begun bubbling up called the dark store theory. And that has to do with property tax appraisal and valuations and the way that those are handled, depending on whether or not a facility or a commercial building is occupied or operating a business. There are several Court of Tax Appeals cases out there under, currently under review. One in Wichita has already been completed. I think the folks who are pushing the issue are waiting at least until that process makes its way through the full process, and there's some answers or some outcomes related to those Court of Tax Appeals cases. I can say that the numbers are big in Johnson County if the law were to change. And the numbers could be a large impact even to institutions like the Community College. Anyone who gets a portion of property tax or has a mill levy that comes to their budget for operations will see an impact. I know that folks across the state aren't as fully aware of what those numbers look like, and I think that those conversations are being, beginning to be held in outstate areas. I think the other piece that people are not taking into consideration are the 20 mills and the impact that that would have at the state level, and what that does in addition to the school finance conversation that's being held. So I bring that up, not because there's a bill or there's legislation pending, but because it's going to be a conversation that will be had in the not-too-distant future. I do know that the Senate Tax Chair, though this is not in the calendar yet, is planning on having an informational briefing on this issue. But only one side of the group is being allowed to present, and that is the folks that are currently challenging the current law. So we'll see what comes of that hearing or that brief information, that informational briefing. The other interesting piece in the way of revenue is another informational briefing. We've had a lot of those this spring, or this winter. Comes from the Department of Revenue and the Kansas Society of CPAs, who have analyzed the federal tax code changes and what that means for the Kansas budget. And as we approach the next fiscal year, Kansas stands to see an increase of around 138 million in its budget. And that number could go up, assuming that Kansas does not make any changes that align itself with the federal tax code. That could be helpful, given this overall conversation. But again, there's a series of unknowns when it comes to that. It's not news around here. We've got a new governor, and as of Wednesday, we have a new Lieutenant Governor sworn in. Both have been making their way around the state and will continue to do so for a period of time, whether you call them familiarization tours or just meet and greets. That is happening. Governor Collier gave his State of the State speech last Wednesday. We're still waiting to see any significant change that, from the current, from the previous administration. And Lieutenant Governor Mann comes to us from Salina, or at least most recently, Salina. You may remember his name because he ran for Congress in 2010 in a six-way primary in the Big First District. So that experience should certainly help him when it comes to running in a multi-candidate primary for the governor's race. You may see him making his way around the Johnson County area in the near future. I know that he's County area in the near future. I know that he's, he's been traveling the state on a familiarization tour since, since he was named, just on Tuesday evening. Let's talk a little bit about the education budget, because that's where I think we're going to see the most impact this year. You'll recall that the governor's budget recommendations that I talked about last month put some money back into the CTE programs that hadn't been funded previously. It was a five-year plan. The, the House Appropriations Committee has generally moved forward with the governor's budget recommendations, but there's a little bit of a, a difference there, and there's no impact or no negative impact to community colleges with the, with the governor's budget recommendations. I think they tweaked a few things as it relates to state universities. But the Appropriations Chair asked the Board of Regents for some options as it relates to restoration. You'll recall that the Board of Regents' number-one priority is restoring the four percent budget cuts that were made in calendar year 2016, but budget year 2017. Clearly, with all that's going on, that's going to be a real challenge. I have attached a, I guess you could call it a spreadsheet, but it's a document that would go in a landscape format in the report that shows what some of those fractional percentages might look like for a restoration. And I think that when that committee starts talking about the supplemental bill in full, that they will be looking at what options exist. The Senate has not had that conversation yet, but that does prove to be promising that House leadership is supporting that, that move. That just came out late this afternoon, and so that's brand-new, brand-new information. The few bills that are out there, one that came up on general orders had been sitting around that had nothing to do with college campuses, but did have to do with reciprocity of concealed carry license, came up on general orders a week and a half or so ago, and that bill was amended in several fashions. So, just to give you a brief rundown of what occurred, an amendment was added that would lower the age to eighteen for those who want to apply and get a concealed carry permit. There was an attempt to amend the bill to permanently exempt college campuses from concealed carry, which failed on the floor, and then a follow-up amendment that would change the concealed carry on campus to require a concealed carry permit. So, again, it would meet that, the lowered age range, but if you wanted to conceal carry on campus, you would, if the law were to pass, the bill were to pass, you would be required to have a concealed carry permit. That bill passed out of the House and made its way to the Senate. We're hearing that there will be no action taken in the Senate on that bill. The other bill that I wanted to talk about also had a hearing this afternoon has to do with free speech on college campuses. The interesting component about that bill is no one knows where it came from, and there were no proponents present to testify. And so, in a very unprecedented move, one of the senators sitting around the table just spoke in favor of the bill from, from his Senate chair. There were a couple of written opponents that, that provided testimony, and nobody's really certain about what the bill's intent is or where it came from, though the reviser did indicate that, that he has seen a trend of bills like those being discussed around the country. So, we'll continue to, to monitor that. I don't believe there's any negative impact whatsoever to the operations that we would have on campus, and it's something that we've been talking about with the Government Affairs Task Force on our weekly phone calls. The, another interesting politically-charged bill that is having a hearing, well, I'm assuming that it's completed by now, but it was moved up to today at 3:30 PM, deals with a change in the way the, the Undocumented Immigrant Student Tuition Act works. That bill was passed around 2004, 2006, and permits students that meet certain criteria, having attended the Kansas High School for three years, graduating, to attend a community college or college at an in-state rate. They receive no scholarship or no assistance and pay that in-state rate. This bill that came out of nowhere last week would charge those students the out-of-state rate and use the offset amount for the in-state rate to fund a Kansas Foster Care, Foster Child Educational Act fund that was passed a couple of years ago. It was an unfunded mandate that the higher education institutions simply absorbed in their, in their operations. And there's a couple of sheets that I've attached to my report that indic, are information that the Board of Regents provided to the committee. They did not testify, nor did KACC, but I thought that, that that information would be helpful for you as, as we continue to watch this bill move through the process. Finally, a couple of bills that, that were introduced related to the campus carry issue. One is a bill, and I'm not sure why this bill hasn't been introduced in, in the recent past, maybe because people didn't think that there was support there or the ability to, to move it, and I don't know if it's going to get a hearing because it's not been scheduled for one, but that's a bill that would repeal the prohibition of lobbying for or against gun control if you receive state funds. That bill was introduced late last week, as was a bill that simply mirrors the amendment that Representative Barbara Ballard, in fact, she introduced the bill from Lawrence on the permanent campus exemption, and that bill is 2685. We're reaching the end of the first, you can't call it a semester because that's not how it works in the legislature, but we're reaching the turnaround period where bills have to cross the, the House of Origin. House bill's got to go to the Senate, Senate bill's got to go to the House, unless they've been blessed by one of the, the rules that, that exist out there that keeps bills preserved or keeps them alive. There's not been a lot to, to really exchange between the Houses, and so it's going to be a very quick and brief turnaround period, and then legislators will come back at the beginning of March and begin the, the process all over again for the second House of Origin. So, Mr. Chair, I would stop there and see if there's any questions either about those bills or...
I have two. Well, the other trustees think about theirs. Regarding the dark store theory, you mentioned it's considerable amount to Johnson County and JCC. Have you done the analysis with staff to determine what that does impact the county, how that does impact the county and the college?
We have not talked specifically, although I've seen a document that has come from the Johnson County Appraisers Office that indicates around a $10 million number, I believe, Dr. Sobchak.
Ten point five.
Mm-hmm. And I'm not sure...
Ten point five what?
College.
College.
Lost, lost revenue to the college.
And that's...
Just, just to JCCC.
That's forever. I mean, that's permanent.
Per, per year?
Yeah, per year.
Yeah.
Your taxes get lowered. The thinking is that will then transfer to the property owner, so the property owner will pick up that ten point five, but I, I think that would be an interesting thing to watch.
What's the theory behind the dark, dark store?
They, the tax, the tax will be based on the dark store, box store. Of course, you, I know Trustee Musial here's chomping at the bit to get on this, but it will be taxed as if the store is vacant. So, it'll be dark, it'll be a vacant store. That, that theory can then spread to strip malls, it can spread to just about anything except the personal residences of, of people, so...
I'll, I'll get some information from you.
I, I, it's, I think it's a national movement, isn't it, to, to lower taxes?
It's a trend in the appraisal practice to value big-box stores particularly differently than in the past on the notion that once somebody, if Target leaves their store, that store is, its value is way diminished because it was developed as a big box and as a Target store, and therefore, it's not easily sold for the same value. And if tax values is fair market value, that lowers the value of the store as a Target store, which has an effect on the taxes it pays and the taxes the city and the county and the state receive.
I, I believe it's getting traction. They say it's getting traction in states like Wisconsin. It's also popping up like in Texas. It's, it'll be a national initiative, I'm sure.
And it's being promoted by business owners or real estate developers?
Well, I think Target, I believe Target did the first one.
I don't know.
That, that was the case in Cedric County, and that case has made, it's made through the process, but there are several cases here in Johnson County involving other large box-type stores. I believe Bass Pro may even be one of those. There's a number of them that are currently under that judicial review process through the Court of Tax Appeals.
Secondly, last month, you indicated that the session was impacted by the K-12 funding, and that not much would happen until that was resolved. So, when this study comes in, the first part of March, depending upon, of course, what that study indicates, how rapid do you anticipate the Senate or the House proceeding with whatever those results may be? My assumption is that the reason for the study is to gather additional information, not to challenge the Supreme Court, but certainly to balance the Supreme Court's position that we're not funding schools properly.
I think that the reason the study was, was commissioned was to get current data with today's financial numbers. I do think that many legislators feel that their position was not adequately argued to the Supreme Court, and so I wouldn't dismiss that they wouldn't be taking that information back to the court to, to further supplement what money they did infuse into K-12. Regarding the speed of which that will occur, I think it will be difficult to say. My understanding is the final report is due somewhere around the middle of March, so I don't really know what we're going to even see in this glimpse of, of the study that, that's coming out. I believe that, I believe the folks are out of Texas that are doing the study. I don't even know the name of the, the firm, but that's, that's just what we, we hear. And I, I still don't thi, even though they will get the information in March, I still don't think we'll see any significant movement until after April 15th. Keep in mind, the legislature goes on break for three, three and a half weeks in, in April, and so I think, once again, when they come back at the end of April, that's when we'll see the yeoman's work take place.
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
I have one, though.
Yeah, could you please elaborate on how a bill can, can actually get in, get registered or whatever, and nobody knows who brought it? I mean, is it kind of like there's, the papers are put in a bag and put in front of the reviser's office in the morning before anybody gets there, and they, I mean, how does that work? Somebody has to know who, who submitted that.
Yeah, there's a lot of number, there's a number of ways a bill can become a bill. We could, we could get out the Schoolhouse Rock cartoon if we wanted to, some, some meeting. There, you know, transparency has been the buzzword since Governor Collier's taken over, and, and even the House has, has initiated some steps to look at how a bill is introduced and whose name is on it. Anyone can request a bill introduction based on certain dates. There's deadlines, so you can go to the microphone in a committee and request that a bill be introduced. A committee can request that a bill be introduced, and so it will have the committee's name on the bill. In the past, we've had to research the minutes pretty, pretty thoroughly to find out if we really truly wanted to find out who requested the bill. That's why we go to committee, even though there's not anything on the agenda that, that maybe we're following, just so we can see what that looks, what that process looks like. I do think that we'll see some changes with that, but even, even so, that doesn't change the process. It's all about the rules. The House has rules, the Senate has rules, and then there are joint rules. And when it comes to moving a piece of legislation through, we still have the gut-and-go process, and someone's name may be on a bill, and that bill becomes something else, and it has nothing to do with the person that introduced the bill. So, it's, it's kind of one of those dicey answers, that there's not a specific, specific route to trace back who, who introduced the bill. We're getting better at that. I say "we're." I think, I think the legislative process is getting better at identifying that.
Jerry?
Yes, Greg. I just make a comment on the, on the bill that I, I suspect will go nowhere, but that would undo the legislature's work of a few years ago, which said, "You can't spend a dime of, quote, 'public money' to lobby on anything for or against anything related to policy on guns." And I think it's, it's important for all of us here, that, that same muzzle could be imposed on anybody from a K-12 school district going up and talking about school funding, or anybody from a city going up and talking about potholes. And so, I hope this legislature, in, in light of Governor Collier's and, and the legislative leadership's new embrace of transparency, would understand that public officials, whether they're elected or they're professional staff, should have a right to go to Topeka and tell the legislators what they think on a particular policy issue without being muzzled by the threat, I believe, of a misdemeanor crime. So, hopefully, maybe that will get some traction. I doubt it this year, but maybe next year, that actual citizens can actually go up there and not worry about whether they put something on college letterhead and wondering if that would risk a misdemeanor conviction.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions from Mr. Carter, and maybe even counsel. I apologize, as, as a lawyer licensed in Kansas, I don't know exactly how the Lieutenant Governor is confirmed. Is this, because under the Kansas Constitution, the governor is sole executive power eaten, and then, as with Attorney General, Secretary of State, from the point, the Lieutenant Governor is out of office.
That's within his purview of powers as outlined in the Constitution.
So, less of confirmation process needed, and less of the government. And then, second, I think this was an issue last year, maybe in years past. Our, our executive was unable to testify one way or the other with respect to guns on campus. There is already something in, in the law.
That, that's what Trustee Musial was speaking about, is this bill would repeal that prohibition.
I don't think that's what you're using very well, so... I apologize.
If, the, the law, the, the law that was added in, I think, 2013, says that if you receive any state appropriation, that organization cannot, you can, you are not permitted to lobby for or against gun control. So, it's both sides of the coin, but it's if you receive state appropriations.
And because we know we hurt the feelings of some people when they watch this online or they're watching, it sure seems to me like a free speech violation to be limiting our ability, one way or the other, to speak out against it. So, I would hope that that law changes, and it'd be, I'm a litigator, so I don't mean to be biased, and I'm not looking for any piece of action, but it sure would be a shame if that litigation...
And I would say, just to respond, Trustee Cross, and to Teresa Sahar's testimony tonight, before that bill, the chairman of our board at that time did testify in Topeka against guns on campus, so the college has officially taken a position against concealed carry.
I understand. We have unanimously done.
Yes, you have.
Well, and I, I presented positions last year as chair through a memo that didn't go on Johnson County Community College Letterhead, but I did as the chair of this board, based on our discussions that have been public. But it's ridiculous that if I had driven up there, I would have to make sure I couldn't get reimbursed by the college, and I better not put it on college letterhead, or somebody might go to jail for a misdemeanor crime. And that's, that's the silliness of it, that public elected officials or our staff cannot tell the legislature what our policy position is on, on, on an issue.
I wholeheartedly concur, Mr. Chair. So, neither our president nor General Richard Myers of Kansas State, who is a trained warrior, who can testify on this matter. It's just utter ridiculousness.
I, I do want to point out that last year, Dr. Harvey and Dr. Arjo delivered a very eloquent testimony, and even though it wasn't formally on behalf of the college, they certainly were, I, I think they were speaking for those who, of like mind.
And, uh, Trustee Lawson.
Oh, I just had a question about the legislation on DACA. If this starts to move, do we know the financial impact that that will have on the college?
Uh, I, I assume we can take a look at the numbers that are listed in the, the information that the Board of Regents provided to the committee, and probably could get a sense on what that is. I don't know that we know...
The Regent number, I believe, is like 198, almost 200.
We have 192 of the 670 enrolled across the state. I think from an enrollment projection, we'd anticipate decreased enrollment. By far, there are way more, there are 495 in community colleges, only 142 in universities, and that's because of the tuition differential. If we were to increase tuition to that estate rate, I think it would make it prohibitive for a lot of students. So, I don't know, I would be surprised if CS increased revenue. I'd probably just see a decrease enrollment.
Just for the public, can you give us a, a range of the in-state versus the out-of-state tuition?
94 for Johnson County residents for tuition and fees, and 215 for out-of-state.
It's quite a jump. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, thanks. Good luck. I think we have our work cut out for us, as always, so thank you very much. Next item, committee reports and recommendation. The first is the audit report. I'll report that the Audit Committee did meet on Thursday, February 8th, here in this building at eight o'clock. We have one item to bring to you, one recommendation for action, and that is the RFP for External Audit Services. I would remind new trustees that we have an internal audit team that meets regularly, and this is for our external audit needs. You'll see that we, eight firms were notified, six firms responded. The Review Committee, again, went through an extensive analysis of the, of the finalists. You can see that the low bid is being recommended for our approval, and so it is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the establishment of a contract for annual financial audits, audit services for the college's fiscal year, ending June 30, 2018, with... services for the college's fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, with Rubin Brown LLP, and the amount of $76,350.
I'll second.
And I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also had quarterly projects update. Ms. Vogler and Ms. Boyd presented information on our in-process and planned audits. These include an audit of procurement contracting services, which is currently underway, and an upcoming cloud computing audit, which is to be outsourced. And that can only be done on cloudy days, so we have to be sensitive to the weather. That's what I know about clouds. We had quite a discussion on the audit matrix. We have a number of items that we audit each period, and it's really quite interesting. Those audits are listed from slight to severe in terms of how we approach them. There are people assigned to them with a timeline, and it's really quite detailed of how our internal audit committee works on those areas. The ethics report line was updated. We had—through January 31st, from October 24th last quarter to January 31st, seven reports were received via the ethics line. Three reports were received anonymously, and as of January 30th, five have been reviewed and appropriately addressed, and two are in current progress. So again, I really feel confident that that process works well, and we deal with those issues in a timely manner. We also had an update on the COPS Watch case data, and I guess, you know, we had an executive session just dealing with post-audit results. All very, very well done. I will defer to Trustee Ingram, who sits on that board as well. But again, I just—I really feel confident that with our team led by Janelle Vogler that—and our external auditors, that the college is in really, really great operating condition, so—Trustee Ingram, any comments?
I would agree. That was the first meeting that I had attended as a member of that committee, so it was all fairly new, but feel very confident with our leadership, so.
Any questions about the audit? Our next audit quarterly meeting will be in May, and again, held at 8:00 a.m. Our next item is collegial steering. Collegial steering did meet on February 6th, and we have representation from the Faculty Association, the Faculty Senate, Educational Affairs Administration. We had two agenda items. We reviewed the purpose of the committee, just to make sure that the new players—we changed trustees on that committee in January with the election—that we all understood why we were there. And then we went into quite a robust discussion on academic freedom, which Trustees Musil and I guess—
Sharp.
Sharp was on that committee. That happened to be on agendas in the first semester of the year. Probably has been on the agenda for several semesters of every year. But we really had a terrific discussion, I thought, and Dr. McLeod has put together a one-page statement on academic freedom, which is really foundationally built from the AAUP, the American Association of University Professors. There's a distinction there between academic freedom and freedom of speech. And I, in fact, being as anal as I am about meetings, had to cut off the discussion, got chastised by the president to say, "This is the best discussion we've had on academic freedom," and—but—
Nothing to do with the leadership of the chair.
We cut it off, but that will continue to be pursued and discussed, I think, by the team, the association, Senate, and Affairs and Administration. But thank you, Dr. McLeod, for getting us to that point. It's—it was really kind of interesting. So with that, our next meeting is March—
6th.
—6th, and so we look forward to our next time with collegial steering. Next item is human resources. Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Resources Committee met at 9:30 a.m. on Monday, February 5th, in the Robert Bible Conference Room. And Trustee Lawson was present, Becky Sintliver, and Chris Gray and others were there, including FA President Dennis Arjo and Dr. Jerisapchuk. The medical plan presentation review was made by Mr. Jerry Zimmerman, who introduced Matt Wheeler and Michelle Oldie of Holmes Mercy—Holmes Murphy, who presented a high-level renewal summary of JCC medical dental vision plans. Ms. Sintliver gave an overview of the upcoming negotiations, the mandatory contract negotiation training was completed last week. Contract negotiations have been set for February 20th, 22nd, 23rd, March 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 2018. Ms. Sintliver also gave an update on the faculty salary study being conducted by an outside compensation consultant, and we hope to have that final report in the next few weeks. Ms. Colleen Chandler, Human Resources, reviewed the results of exit interviews for the fourth quarter of 2017. HR began conducting stay interviews in January 2017, which includes interviewing employees at approximately the six-month service date, the vaults for full and part-time employees. The second quarter calendar hires in 2017 were viewed. And Ms. Chandler also reviewed recommended changes to the policies in hiring and onboarding section in the college's policy library. The HR committee has reviewed the recommendation to the changes to the policies in the hiring and onboarding section of the college's policy library, which have been reviewed as part of the broader assessment of the college's personnel policies and procedures. Recommended updates, including material changes noted in the table below, serve on the board packet of pages four and five, excuse me, serve to condense several small policy statements and bring current policy language based on present job titles, terminologies, and practices. And you can see that in the packet of pages four and five. We do have a recommendation tonight. It is the recommendation of the HR committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the modification to the following policies: certification and licensing, criminal background check, new hire paperwork, posting for vacancy, and also approve deletion of the following policies: application for employment, appointment to physician, employment interviews, medical examination, oath of employment, polygraph test, recruitment, screening of applications, and work authorization, as is shown in the board packet. And before I make the motion, I'd like to ask Ms. Sintliver to talk about—I think Trustee Lawson has some questions on the criminal background check and the exact language that we're using. I know I've had discussions with Ms. Wilson about it. I feel comfortable that we're going to be making this review on a case-by-case basis, as is the recommendation of Ms. Wilson and staff. Could you talk a little bit about that, or I'd like Trustee Lawson to ask her own question?
Let's—before we do that, let's get a motion in a second, so we get it on the table, and then we'll have—
I've already done what—
Well, then we can do that after.
Mr. Chair.
I just think protocol, wouldn't it be proper to make the motion and get it on the table?
Yeah.
So if we make the motion in a second, then we'll go through what's your request. But to get it on the table to discuss, we should have a motion in a second. Are you making that motion?
I'm not making a motion.
Also moved, just to have the discussion.
Trustee Musil moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Sintliver—
Yes.
Could you please address my interview with the Speaker?
Yes. The background checks, basically, all this is a background check. We have a third party vendor that does those for us, and so once the background checks come back, all of them either come back as a pass, or if something does flag that comes out of our adjudication guidelines, it comes back as pending, and then we take a look at each of those, and we look at the—basically, the offense that got flagged, we look at how that applies to the child that's there applying, we look at the timeline as far as when it happened, how it reaches the website, and so if you look at those on a case-by-case basis, and then make the determination, and then all of those.
Trustee Lawson.
Yes, so yeah, I have some thoughts on this, and I appreciate Trustee Cross allowing this opportunity to speak on that. I really want to make sure that the Kansans that exit the prison system, that are low-risk, nonviolent people that have felonies on their records, that their debt is paid to society. But I think sometimes inadvertently, our society can continue to punish them in different ways. One of those ways is the ability to find a job. The return rate to prison in Kansas right now is 36%, and a job can make all the difference in someone's life. They become taxpayers, families are reunited, and out of the foster care system, they are also making a living, so they are not needing the requirement of government aid. In DC, Senator Roberts took notice when I brought up the importance of including ex-offenders in the Pell Grants awarding. He also mentioned that our president has an interest in the integration of ex-offenders back into our community. So I really want to make sure this policy is sensitive to this issue. I know that the policy sounds like it's case-by-case, but I feel it's important to have that specific wording, because I believe it helps to clarify the policy. I'd also feel like having a statement that states a reason for why an applicant was not hired when the applicant also carries a felony is important.
And when a flag comes back and someone's pending, if they are defined, they go back to the vendor, and they can basically adjudicate that with the vendor if there was any other concern with theirs.
So that applicant has that journey, they know that process, they're given that information to contact.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they have access to the system, so they can actually see the same information that we received.
Okay. And the specific wording of case-by-case?
We don't have that, but if you notice, the last paragraph of that policy does talk about that it doesn't necessarily disqualify an active employee from employment, and the nature and seriousness of the offense, the date of the offense, and surrounding circumstances, rehabilitation, health benefits of the offense. Those are all taken into consideration when we look at this.
Thank you. Okay.
Were these issues vetted in committee?
No, because Trustee Cross was not there, I did not feel there was a quorum, so I recommended not to bring these forward to the board. So they're here now, so I think there was just a little bit of a miscommunication.
So are we all comfortable with what we're voting on?
I'd rather refer it back to committee, Mr. Chair. Frankly, that was the one reason why I refrained from making the motion. My son had a tube fall out of his left ear, and we have to have surgery to put it back in. That was the reason why I was the president. I wanted additional information before I made the motion, so I would feel more comfortable referring it back to committee.
What would be proper protocol in terms—I guess we could defeat the motion, and then if the committee wants to take it back for further letting—
Just withdraw.
It's an emergency.
Yeah, that was my question.
Most of this is just the cleanup language, and we're just getting it consistent with our process.
A 30-day delay wouldn't make a difference.
And you could—
I withdraw my motion.
You can pull that policy from the motion, and then take the rest of the policy through.
Motion has been withdrawn, the second's been withdrawn, and the chair has requested to go back to committee, and staff is saying that's not a problem, so we'll take it back to committee. Trustee Cross, next item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Learning quality. Trustee Lawson.
I appreciate the new minute format. Thank you so much, Dr. McLeod. I felt that that helped to show the public some of the process that we go through in that committee, and also adding the annual working agenda to the board packet. I think that's helpful when seeing the LQ and four and stuff. I think the public can be very—more tuned into that. Per the discussions in our committee, the trustees have not had a chance to meet with the president to go over the specific time that we were discussing, and I believe we'll get together before the next March committee and have that discussion to explore any possibilities if or not. This month, we had our learning quality committee meeting. We began discussing about how to improve our practice. I'd like to thank Trustee Musil and Snyder for working with me on developing what I hope is a fairly assertive agenda about looking into the future of our education at the college. Everything else is in the board packet.
Any questions of Trustee Lawson? Very good. Management, Trustee Lindstrom.
You have a recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had a recommendation?
Page 18.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you.
Amendments to transfer credit?
It is the recommendation of the learning quality committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the transfer credit policy as shown in the board packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Trustee Lawson. Management, Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 7th, 2018, right here in the boardroom. The information related to this meeting begins on page 23 and runs through 27 of the board packet. Trustees Musil, Snyder, and I received several presentations from staff. We had an update from Emily Bierman, general manager of Performing Arts of the college's Performing Arts Programming, and a financial report with an overview of expenses and income and highlights of the renovation completed in the Carlson Center, and special thanks went to donor support. Emily also spoke very highly of the volunteers, or the ball stars that work and perform during performances and activities related to the arts education resources. Sherry Barrett, Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and Institutional Outcomes, presented information on the upcoming accreditation site visit. Johnson County Community College will have an evaluation visit, excuse me, by peer reviewers of the Higher Learning Commission, HLC. That visit is scheduled for the spring, and Dr. Barrett explained the role of the Board of the Trustees in this process and what we can do to prepare for a successful visit. I have information here, if anyone has questions on that, it's also in the board packet. Rachel Lear, Associate Vice President of Financial Services and Chief Financial Officer, gave the monthly budget update. Mitch Borches, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the sole source report. He also gave a bid summary, which can be found on page 23 of the board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, gave a monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects, and his report is on page 24 of the packet. Rex also reviewed in the report on financial status of the facility's master plan projects, and it is in your packet on page 25. Although there are no items to bring forth to the board this evening, yesterday, staff updated trustees on the current status of the facility's master plan, Phase 2, and as a result of that work session, and based on the information presented to us, I would suggest that the board take this opportunity to encourage and direct staff to proceed with their work towards a guaranteed maximum price and deliver a facilities master plan Phase 2 report to the Board of Trustees for our review and our response.
I think that—thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. When we left that retreat, I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that we didn't want to hold up the process for GMP, but nothing begins on any of those projects until we've had a chance to evaluate the GMPs. I think, Trustee Musil, you had some interest to make sure that we don't slow the process up.
I'm very comfortable after yesterday proceeding to get the guaranteed maximum price on the phase—the four phases of Phase 2, the four different projects within Phase 2, and the line items, the major line items within each one. I still have a question, and I'll work with staff about getting the timing of those, because they're going to come in at different times.
Yes.
It makes it hard to prioritize between and among them if we choose to do so as a board or as individual trustees, but I'm very comfortable proceeding forward with the programming and the design work. We have to do it, and then it's shovel-ready when we're ready to go fund it.
Okay, Trustee Lawson.
The one thing I was thinking about is the science labs, is finding some way to integrate them into the master plan, not doing the work right now, but just knowing that that will be coming down the road. We have a plan for budget. Were some thoughts as I was driving home, so that it's not in hopes of that board's decision that they include the science labs, but is part of this one big master plan? Just some thoughts.
So we're really not asking for any more detail on GMPs on that, but we just want to make sure that we're aware that those projects are coming.
Excellent.
And I think, Trustee Musil, this comment was, are there other areas that we should be thinking about down the road and not just what's currently being discussed?
And that would be in the form of, let's say, a five-to-10-year master plan, something along those lines, so it would also help to inform trustees who will follow some of you exactly what the institution's been looking at over an extended period of time.
That's what I—
Very good. Trustee Lindstrom.
So for the benefit of the new trustees, Rex has the facilities, and that is also in electronic form that may be benefited— is also in electronic form that may be beneficial for the new trustees and the old trustees as well.
Right.
Now, you said this, but don't you mean this?
Yes.
For trustees Lawson and Snyder, that's a kind of a listing of every single thing on campus that is going to wear out or the expected renewal. Everything is listed there, so it gives us some idea, and those are primarily operational functions.
And I would suggest that on your report, Trustee Lindstrom, when you talked about the facilities master plan projects, a lot of those emanate out of that report as we discuss it over time, so.
The purpose of my comment there is, there is no items that management, very unusual, there is no items bringing forth to the board tonight. So I, in reflecting on last night's meeting, I thought it would be appropriate at least to have the board weigh in to staff and give some kind of...
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions of the long management meeting you had this past month?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
President's report, recommendation for action. Treasurer's report is the first one. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
The treasurer's report is a report about lots of detail about financial information that was processed during the last period, and it is so cumbersome that we're allowing, Trustee Cross, that there's no time to pull it out.
I was saying that page twenty-eight of the board packet is the first page. Apologize, I have a new laptop, as you know, yesterday I had difficulty using it. It's user error. The treasurer's report, the following pages contain the treasurer's report for the month ended December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, state operating grant payments of ten point three million. And add to the lower end property tax distribution of fifty-three point four million were received during January and will be reflected in next month's report. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of December two thousand and seventeen, subjects and causes.
No motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Cross, anything else?
Yes, I thank Rachel Leers and the staff in my trust greatly for their work on this effort, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Sobchak?
This past week, trustees Lawson, trustee Cook, myself attended the National Legislative Summit for Community Colleges. About nine hundred to a thousand trustees and community college presidents were in attendance. It was a fascinating experience. We also got to visit our own legislators, senators, Moran and Roberts, as well as Congress and Yoder. But a big issue facing all community colleges certainly came, that came out there was the Higher Education Act that potentially affect all of us, and a big part of that was financial aid. And Pell Grants, SEOG grants, all these different types of things. And financially, it's kind of like a quagmire. It's so complicated, can be so convoluted. And so I asked Randy Weber last night, basically, if he could give us a little overview of our financial aid picture and also tie that into a little overview on the enrollment report that you all, you just saw today, that came out. And so Randy, could you please take us through that?
Bear with me while I come up here. Trustees have these slides in a packet to help a little bit to guide through them. We don't really have the lightning round tonight, but I'm going to try to do basically a brief enrollment profile, how we look at our students, what the trends been a little bit with them, as well as kind of the student aid that will follow up that story that makes a little more sense, in hopes that if you guys have some follow-up questions, then we can definitely go into a deeper dive with some of those things. And as Dr. Sobchak mentioned, with short notice, with somebody who has very limited chart-making skills, we went down to chart one, I wouldn't even say one oh one today, we're probably in developmental chart-making with my skills. But what I've got in front of you here a little bit is this is our total fall head count, and this is per our census report. And so we've talked a lot in the past about, we're doing a lot of, a lot of work on, census is essentially twentieth day for us this year, it was just this last Tuesday in spring. That's the state head count report we give, but we also do a lot of enrollment toward end of term. So this is part of our story, but it's definitely not our whole story, and where a lot of our enrollment growth as an institution has come of late, has been late start, late session courses. All that said, though, on our census date in the fall of two thousand and thirteen, you can see, not very well from the back, that we had a fall enrollment of nineteen thousand seven hundred, six hundred and seventy-two students. This fall, and I'll say this briefly, this fall, we had eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty, eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight. Last fall, we were at nineteen one thirty-nine. If you recall, this fall, we had the decision that was made with high school students that impacted the students who potentially would have been enrolled at census date and then there were enrolled shortly thereafter. That would have seen an increase of a couple hundred students, so we probably would have been looking at probably closer to about eighteen nine. It's not a hard number I can give there, but saying that it's around that number, over the last four years, five falls, we've experienced an overall enrollment decrease of around four and a half percent. That's very typical, given the economy, that's better than the national average has been performing. We are in one of the lowest unemployment rates in the country, and so typically, when people are employed, they're not looking for education and vice versa. When they can't find a job, they go back for skills training, and so we, this is a very typical trend for us. What I want to do now is just give a little bit of a deeper dive as far as when we look at that number, what does that mean? And so this line here at the top, and the lines probably tell more story than the numbers in this case, this line at the top, and this is our fall census date age count. And so when you look at from fall thirteen to fall twenty-seventeen, this is our traditional age student from eighteen to twenty-three years old, and despite a four and a half percent decrease in enrollment, we're up over a hundred and eighty students in this range, so that I'm-going-to-college population has not decreased for us, straight out of high school, even despite our aggressive dual credit and concurrent enrollment trends. The next line here is our under eighteen group, and you can see that that one has gone from about thirty-four seventy-seven to probably closer to what would have been about four thousand again, it probably would have been flat this year if we followed the exact same enrollment trend. That's an increase of six hundred students. And so we look at that, when we look at the eighteen to twenty-three range, how many of our students took classes in high school and now may not be looking to directly matriculate to us? And when we look at some of those numbers from a recruitment standpoint, we're really excited about how we hold up and tell our story and continue to enroll students. The next four populations are really where we've seen the decrease in enrollment, and where a lot of our conversations about what are we doing, how are we supporting our students come from. So the gray line here is our twenty-four to twenty-nine range, and when you look at that, in two thousand and thirteen, we had thirty-one hundred students enrolled in this age group. We now have twenty-six hundred, so we're down over five hundred students in this age range alone. The next age range is the thirty-year-olds, thirty to thirty-nine, down another five hundred students, forty to forty-nine, three hundred students, fifty-plus, three hundred students. So it's that twenty-four plus, that not what we typically phrase as a non-traditional student, though we don't know what a traditional age student is anymore because our average age is twenty-six and a half, but it's that non-traditional college-age student is what's down by a combined eleven, sixteen, over twenty-two hundred students. And when you look at the traditional age student, high school and eighteen to twenty-three, we're up over seven hundred students in this time. And that's why sometimes it's important to break it down and look at these numbers in this way, because it tells a different story within. We are out in our high schools, we do still have good reputation within our local community, where students who want to come to college will. But I think people looking for a better life through going to education versus work, that's where we're experiencing some of our challenges. The next thing I want to talk a little bit on the next chart will then be by student population, and this has some merit and some value, because then we look at how are our recruitment efforts going, how are retention efforts going? And so this top line here represents our continuing students, so these would be the students who were enrolled in the previous term. So if it's spring, they were enrolled in fall, et cetera. So we had, in fall of thirteen, we had ten thousand seven hundred students who would have been enrolled in spring of thirteen, whereas this fall, we had ninety-five hundred students. So even students who are participating, our retention was struggling. We recognize, you can see on this line here, these first three years, we recognize this decline, and that's one of the things we've worked really hard on in our Pathways Project in particular, our first time in college students, we've seen a better increase. But even fall to fall overall at the college, when we were down two percent this year, our continuing students was actually up thirty, fifty-one students. That's a win, and so we're excited about that, but we watch these in this way. The next line is our high school students. Once again, it has kind of that anomaly there. Assuming flat this year, we would have gone up by about six hundred students. That's pretty equivalent to the under eighteen, so that parallels that under eighteen pretty well. The first time in college, and so this talks a little bit about that, this, that light blue line, and it's held flat for the last four years, from twenty-five forty-seven to twenty-five ninety-eight. So people who are coming to college for the first time are still coming to Johnson County Community College at the same rate. The next line is a guy who fat fingers his numbers, and we did not experience a significant transfer drop last year. I think I forgot a four, so it should be one four four seven. So transfer, and interestingly enough, in the fall of thirteen, transfer plus previously attended were combined, so we've modified the report since then. But it is, it is worth noting that the transfer and returning to us together are down three hundred students. So we're down three hundred students for people who are either coming back to school or have decided, I'm going to go to Johnson County from somewhere else. That has a result to do, again, with other schools' maybe retention efforts, as well as just employers' ability to retain their employees. And then lastly, this low green line here is other, and the way we define other, most of those are railroad, so we lump them in there, and that's, that happens to be down just a little bit here. The next thing I want to point out is just some demographic characteristics of our students. Our ethnicity, not surprisingly, we are, much like our local community, significant Caucasian white. In the last number of years, our Hispanic population has overtaken our African-American population. Our Hispanic population up until this year was our only growing ethnic population at the college. We put a lot of efforts into, and there's been a growing community, but even this past fall, we experienced a dip in our Hispanic enrolled students. Next couple of slides I have then, and I want to talk just briefly, and we're wrapping up here, is our head count by their enrollment status, but then how they enroll in credit hours. So when you look at our, the chart on the left, what this says here is of all our students enrolled in fall thirteen, sixty-three hundred of them were full-time, whereas thirteen, excuse me, yeah, thirteen thousand of them were part-time. So two to one ratio, basically, of part-time to full-time. And so that counts when we do parking and admissions, applications, and how we do registration processes. When you look at hours at the college, though, you start to see it a lot different. And I mean, the math would explain that, but full-time students then take just over half of the college's credit hours. And so when we lose a part-time student versus when we lose a full-time student, it talks about the impact of that a little bit. And so just to kind of remind us that, yes, we have less full-time students, however, they are taking more of the hours. And then the last one I have here to do part of the enrollment...
Is full-time twelve credit hours?
Twelve credit hours in the fall and spring, yes. Thank you for asking that, I'm sorry. And then the last one here, before we just briefly talk about the financial aid, is the head count and credit hours by degree-seeking, non-degree-seeking. So you've heard us talk a little bit in the past about our pathways and retention strategies and what we're trying to do to help our degree-seeking students reach their educational goals. And so when you look at the twenty-two percent of high school students, they may or may not attend Johnson County, they would come as first time in college if they come after high school. So then I, sometimes what I do is I say of the others. But when I look at the others, I look at degree-seeking versus non-degree-seeking, and from that standpoint, we're sitting at over a four to one ratio of degree-seeking versus non-degree-seeking, and it's even more extreme when we look at the credit hours that they take at the college, and you've got an over five to one ratio here. And so when we think about the impact of our degrees or certificate-seeking students and their educational goals, we start to see that almost three-quarters of the credit hours that we're delivering to students are students who have an educational goal to achieve a degree or a certificate. And so that's why a lot of our energies, not every energy, but a lot of our energies are targeted to those populations. And the last thing I've got here in...
Randy? Hold on, are there any questions on any of these charts before we get to financial aid?
I do, I do have a question. On the first couple of graphs, would you have information regarding peer institutions nationally on that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, we can go in. And I know that nationally, the last four or five years, the average for community colleges has been about two percent or more drop, so you take that over four years, you're looking at probably eight to ten percent drop, but I would want to verify that, but...
And then the other, the other question I had, you made me think about it in your presentation, is, is there a possibility that we, or maybe, just throwing this out to see if it's something we need to think about, a ratio for the fluctuation in enrollment versus the growth in population of Johnson County too?
Yeah, so probably, we, the best analysis we have of that, that we do, is we do a yield rate or a penetration rate for our high schools, and so we look at what their graduating classes are. Size-wise, we know the fifth grades are larger than sophomore classes now, so we look at the percentages we yield from them. Interestingly, and not, but not surprisingly enough, is that the schools where we have more of our concurrent courses taken are the schools where we get less of the graduating high school population percentage base. And we have such varying high school graduating, what we like to do is their rates versus their numbers when we, when we look at those. And so we, we have as low as, for the public, Johnson County schools, I think we have as low of a twelve, thirteen percent penetration rate or yield rate of graduating high schools, and as high as about twenty-seven percent of one or two high schools in our county who directly attend Johnson County afterwards. But as far as the overall county, you know, it would be an interesting thing to look at. I do know that when you look at the census report, what it'll tell you is Johnson County population's growing, but a lot of it's educated people moving to Johnson County, so they're probably not seeking an education, so that's one of the reasons we look at the K-12, is it's more likely to see their kids coming to school versus people moving here looking for an education.
Thank you, Trustee.
Alrighty, and then so, with this, there's a lot of numbers in this chart here, but what I wanted to get at a little bit, this top line here is the total amount of FAFAs we receive, which is free application for federal student aid. Every student has a right to fill out a FAFSA, it's free. The completed apps are how many that we get that they actually do everything they need to do. We see that we had high numbers of thirty-eight fifty-six, and they've been decreasing with a small uptick again this year. That's important to know because I think what we're seeing there is we're decreasing in student population, but even at a greater rate, we're decreasing in students who receive aid as a population. And that number would be, could be reflected by what I'm going to put at the bottom here when I got my arrow on. We awarded some form of fund to sixty-eight hundred students in the fourteen, fifteen year compared to fifty-six hundred last year, and a lot of that will be Pell and loan. But just to talk through this just briefly, JCC scholarships, these two tables here represent how much we offered in aid to students, and then the one below it is how much we actually paid, paid in aid. Sometimes we paid more than we offered because it was initial offerings and we ended up with more scholarship or followed through there. But the things that I, that I like seeing here, we offer between the foundation and our student fees, we offer over two point four million dollars in aid or scholarships to students. And those scholarships, obviously, don't have to be returned. We have generous donations through, through local foundation, as well as some student grants that go through there. We pay about two point three million dollars in institutional scholarships. The next couple lines here are, we've talked a little bit about this with the group, the Pell Grants, and to provide a little bit of context, a student's eligibility for Pell Grant and loan, and to some degree, SEOG, which... and to some degree SEOG, which our scholarship team provide, push, or excuse me, our financial aid team award somewhat case-by-case, the SEOG administration's a little bit trickier. But the Pell Grant and the loan eligibility is determined by a student's, what we call EFC, which is an estimated family contribution. So, the amount we award is not impacted by the government giving us money, it's truly a student's score and their decision to enroll here, and the amount of hours they take. So, if they take six hours, they're half-time, nine hours, they're three-quarter time, 12 hours, they're full-time. And so, their eligibility for federal aid would be there. We wouldn't run out of federal money to award, is probably the easiest way to say that. It's just dependent upon our enrolled students and their eligibility. And so, in this case here, we either have fewer students who are looking for aid. The other thing we saw with the economic uptick is less students eligible for aid. Families who are recovering economically and have higher home income would impact the student's eligibility. But you can see, we've given from fourteen-six in Pell, and we're down, this year is a still work in progress because we're in the spring semester. So, I'll just use a two-year roll here from about fourteen-seven to eleven-three. So, we've, we've decreased our Pell, Pell offering awards pretty significantly. The SEOG stands for Student Education Opportunity Grant, and that's grant money that our staff uses often to backfill with students who need some additional funds to complete their courses. Maybe they run out of Pell in fall and spring, and we might give some summer aid so they can continue in summer. There's some discretionary award there. The thing that we get most excited about is some strategies that we've deployed. When you look here and see that we gave over $14.3 million in loans two years ago, and now we're giving just north of $10 million, so we're down over $4 million in loan award. And.
Randy, all these numbers are down, not just the federal dollars? Is that right?
Um, no, all the, help me.
All of our scholarships, Pell Grants, loans, subsidies across the border are down, not just the federal.
Correct, yeah. Our JCC scholarships are close to flat, so what we give in institutional aid are flat. What we're allowed to award in SEOG is what we kind of watch. SEOG and work-study is a permission for us to be able to award. Pell Grant and loans are student eligibility based on federal scores. And so, we're down, but we're down in eligible students or the amount a student is eligible for. That's kind of a blend there. But we watch our cohort default rate. One of the things we know is that students, community college students have higher default rates, but they have lower loan amounts. So, a community college student may be defaulted on $1,200, and then maybe 10 of them, so that's what, $12,000. But one university student might be defaulted on $30,000. And so, a lot of the default risk is against university students, but the numbers are against community colleges just because of loan numbers. But our teams worked really hard to make sure that we're not over awarding loans so students don't get caught up in student loan debt. That's kind of a nutshell on, and provided you some take-home information there with slides on what we award, and I'd definitely be willing to answer any questions.
Randy, I'm trying to find your email that you sent me, but I'll just go from memory, which is dangerous. One of the items at ACCT, as we did our lobbying, and one of the federal policy positions of both AACC and ACCT is, and Dr. Sopich referenced, the Reauthorization Act is the Prosper Act. And within the Prosper Act, which is a component of the Reauthorization Act, is the new idea that colleges should pay back finance, Pell financial assistance for students that dropped out of class early. And the change has been that it used to be that if you completed 60% of the year, there wouldn't be a penalty. But now, some of our congressmen are getting creative and saying that they've broken it into four quarters. So, if you drop out in the first 25% of the semester, the college has to pay back 100% of that Pell money. If the student drops out at 50% of the semester, 50% of the money, I'm sorry, 75% of the money, and if they drop out at 75% of the semester, they have to pay back 50%. And then, if, even if they go to 99% of the semester and drop out, don't complete the semester, the college has to pay back 25% of that penalty. It's a huge number nationwide, millions of dollars. And I think it's called the RT-T4, return.
R2-T4, yeah.
Yeah, R2-T4, return to.
It's return to Title IV.
Title IV, Title IV money, yeah. So, and it seemed to me that that was like 157,000 semester, $300,000 for a year, and the college would have to pay that back. And the thinking is that it incentivizes the college to help students complete the program. And yet, students drop out for a number of reasons that are not under the control of the college. So, that's something we're watching and looking at, but if you hear of discussion on the Prosper Act, that's, that's one of the items. Paul.
For a student that's taking 12 or 15 hours, a full-time student, what would be the expected cost of books?
Yeah, I wish I could answer that. The cost of books really depends on the program a student's studying. I mean, there are programs that have next to nothing. If you're pre-med, you're going to be pre-expensive books, because a lot of the science books in particular, but there are a lot of other courses.
STEM fields, you're probably going to average somewhere in the, in the wheelhouse of $600 to $700, starting out, whereas humanities fields, you will probably be averaging somewhere more in the $400 range, so.
And can students typically borrow more than the cost of tuition books?
Absolutely. So, students, with the EFC, we have, as an institution, we create what we call a cost of attendance. And the cost of attendance includes their cost to us, but also the cost of living for, that's the highest part of it. So, when we say, "what's the cost of attendance for a student," and we're mindful of tuition and fees and books, we also have to realize they're paying rent or mortgage in the community, childcare, transportation costs. And so, oftentimes, when students are borrowing money, it's for that cost of living expense. I mean, we have students who might be on scholarship here, and their scholarship is covering their, their cost to JCC. It's the, but I still have costs of living.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, thank you very much. Appreciate the detail, it's very helpful. I do not believe we have any old business, we have no, I'm sorry, were you finished with your report?
No.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm finished.
There is old business. Last meeting, I asked for a financial report on what's in storage and stuff, so I just wanted to present that as part of old business. So, it sounds like a lot of the stuff that we have in storage is not of much, like we're not spending too much money in storage, so that's good. Iron Mountain is the offsite for microfiche and data tape storage, costs about $25,000 per year. This is per our disaster recovery practice, storing excess systems furniture for the new buildings and things like that. Very minimal cost. Same with the art that's being stored also, any kind of insurance, things like that, seems very well managed, so I appreciate that. It does bring up a question about the art that we get from donations that I would like to kind of maybe consider at some point. Dr. Larson, do we have a policy at this point, so say, if we get art, we have the insurance rate, and suddenly, over years, that art increases in value, which would now, we would increase the insurance and maintenance or safety, especially if there's a spike? Do we have a trigger mechanism in there that would alert us to a sharp increase in value, where that piece would be presented to the board so that we can approve that increase in cost? Or is that an automatic increase that just happens? Do we?
I think I can respond to that. Each, not necessarily quarter, but there's a regular time where Kate Allen will bring to the management committee a list of all of that detailed art. We just had that report, as a matter of fact, prior to the election. It lists all of our art pieces, it lists the insurance we have on those items. So, to answer your question, yes, there is a practice in place to make sure that when the pieces are donated, they're properly insured. And we then also have an obligation within the budget to make sure that we properly care for those. So, I don't want to put Kate on the spot, but Kate, that was your kind of report, and did I mess that up properly?
So, I don't think that's my question, but my question was more so, once over time, say, a piece increases dramatically.
Right.
Price, maybe starts out 17,000, and now we're looking at 3 million.
Correct.
Do we automatically just pay for that, or do we, as the board, approve that?
In fact, we're currently having a special audit by some very high-end pieces by an outside art appraiser. But that, again, comes through the management committee.
Okay.
And the answer is yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
The property pieces are reappraised periodically, and I'd suggest you talk to Tom Clayton, who's our insurance risk manager, who covers that along with Kate and Bruce and others. But yeah, we, I think, I think we have a pretty robust policy to keep track of what we have and devalue it, and then insure it.
He does an outstanding job.
Faculty Association, Dr. Arjo. Didn't mean to shock you. It's been a long time.
Well, good evening, and as always, appreciate the chance to address everybody. Busy time of the semester, just in general. We just had a week of two interesting town halls about proposed chair structure that Dr. McLeod hosted, and things is fair to say, they're well-attended. Faculty interest in that topic was pretty robust, and I think it speaks to our willingness and desire to offer input and offer ideas and have a hand in developing those sorts of things. We're gearing up for negotiations, obviously. We had the first meeting last week. On that note, before I forget, I do want to say that the first, or the next general membership meeting of the FA is going to be postponed because of scheduled negotiation sessions. So, instead of being next Thursday, which would normally be, it's going to be the following Tuesday, so that'll be the 27th at 3:30. As always, everybody's invited to attend, it's an open meeting. I want to say a little bit about the bill that was referenced by Mr. Carter about free speech on campuses. That came up a little bit in our discussion at Collegial Steering about academic freedom, that kind of piqued my interest, so I looked up the text of that bill. I don't know what its likely fate is, so we'll just have to wait and see. But I do think it's kind of interesting, and tells us something about the kind of broader moment we're living in, that it would be introduced. So, I did some digging around, and I was able to find some actually identical language from that bill in bills introduced in other states, including Missouri, and one, I think, passed in Virginia. So, clearly, this is being based on some model legislation that's being worked up by, I feel like, sure, two different think tanks. I mean, usually when that happens, there's a political agenda behind it, so I do think it's kind of interesting to try to tease out just why now is this an issue? I'd love to hear an official legal analysis of what this bill would do to a place like JCC. We're past, my sense is not a whole lot, most of it seems to just reaffirm First Amendment rights that people already enjoy. One of the most specific sections would outlaw free speech zones, kind of the idea there, if you're going to do some political activism, you're restricted to a small part of the campus, and those have not fared well and challenged in court in any case. So, again, it's kind of a why introduce this, now kind of a question. So, if you read the whole thing, if you pay attention to what's going on in the academic world, it's not too hard to answer the question, why now? This is clearly a response to what's least perceived to be problems about free speech on colleges and universities across the country. So, these range from speakers being shouted down or interrupted because they're controversial, it includes the perception at least that certain viewpoints are not welcome in classrooms, and everything from that to perceived bias among faculty. So, we, in Kansas, I think, have been spared a lot of the turmoil that's happened in places like UC Berkeley and other places along those lines where this kind of stuff happens, Harvard, Princeton, Middlebury College, there was an episode along those lines. Johnson County Community College remains fairly calm as far as these sorts of high-profile conflicts go. But I do think, as always, we need to be mindful of potential of these things happening, and the perception at least that there is a bit of a clamping down on free speech, whether it's about viewpoints, or whether so-called political correctness, or however you want to characterize it. One part of it I did think was particularly interesting, and I think the faculty will be particularly want to be thinking about, I intend to introduce this at our next meeting, is a section that talks about the rights of students and the need to protect students' free speech rights when they come to a college or university. There's longstanding questions there, it's always kind of a tension-filled area. People come to JCC or any other college, they come with their full range of constitutional protections, and of course, that includes free speech. On the other hand, the college empowers faculty to teach established curriculum, and that certainly means limiting discussion within classes to what's pertinent to the subject being taught and pertinent to the topic at hand and so on. So, just a way of saying, from a faculty perspective, I find this to be a very curious and interesting piece of legislation. I guess it's curious even how it got introduced, which makes it even more interesting in some respects. So, I expect we're going to have a good discussion about it at our meeting next week, and I might return to this topic.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Arjo?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thanks for the detail on the bill, very helpful.
Research Triangle, Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief report. First of all, sales tax receipts for the month of January for the 1/8 cent sales tax goes to the Johnson County Education Research Triangle is, were $1,480,873.60, which was 4% positive over the same time last year, 2017. And we have not met since our last meeting here, and do not meet again until Monday, May 7, 2018, at 7:30 a.m. at the KU Edwards Campus, right up the road at 12600 South Culvera in Overland Park, and the public is invited.
Thank you. Any questions of Trustee Lindstrom?
Kansas Association of Community College trustees, actually met today. We had our Phi Theta Kappa luncheon in Topeka honoring students from all of the community colleges and some technical colleges. Our two students represented the college well, and receiving the PTK award. The association met shortly thereafter in an abbreviated meeting, and then we had to leave early. The Council of Presidents met as well, and so, I'm not sure what happened with the Council of Presidents and the trustees because we came back here. But the next meeting is June 1 and 2 at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. I think the attempt is to bring in a national speaker or two, probably Noah Brown from ACCT, and we'll keep you posted on that particular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think a year and a half will mark your 10-year anniversary, you'll get the gold.
Yeah, yeah, we give out gold KACC.
I've been here five years, and I made one, two, one, one KACC meeting. I know, when I looked at the registry, we have to sign in, you've been going to those, I think, almost the entire tenure you've been here on the board. I want to thank you for representing us there and allowing us to have a voice in an organization that we heavily help subsidize, and protecting our interests there, and so I appreciate your work on, with KACC.
Be careful, because testimony like that might position you to be the next liaison. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I appreciate you, sir.
You know, it's interesting, I feel for some of these colleges and the challenges they have, and, and they do look to us for leadership in a number of areas, and to our staff in a lot of areas. But thank you, Trustee Cross, I appreciate that. Foundation, Trustee Ingram.
Yes, the foundation is pleased to announce the Johnson County Community College Foundation has received a $2 million gift from Doctors David and Mary Zamorowski of Overland Park for the college's largest facilities project in its history. The Zamorowskis join other individuals and organizations in supporting the project's challenge lead gift of $10 million by the Sunderland Foundation. For nearly 20 years, the Zamorowskis have funded scholarships and initiatives at the college, including international service learning projects to Mexico and Uganda, creation of the Healthcare Simulation Center, the college's first endowed professorship for healthcare education, annual underwriting for the National Healthcare Simulation Conference, and most recently, the donation of a patent. The Zamorowskis, who are both retired medical professionals, are making second careers out of helping the Kansas City community, particularly Johnson County Community College, with innovations that train professionals to answer the call for the healthcare needs of the future. The foundation board of directors met Wednesday, January 24, in the Rehner Center, and it was announced that John and Kristi Stewart will be the 2018 co-chairs of Summit Evening. Nominations for the 2018 Johnson County end of the year have been collected, and the selection committee meets soon. My fellow trustees, please mark your calendars for the next foundation member's social to be held Thursday, February 22, at 4:30 p.m. in the BNSF Training Center located in the ITC building on campus. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Those are terrific gifts to the foundation, and we certainly appreciate the philanthropy of our community. Next item is the consent agenda. It's an item where we, the board deals with a number of routine items. Trustees have an option to pull an item off that agenda if they so desire for further discussion. Do I have a motion to pull any items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are moving into an executive session this evening. I would like to entertain a motion to do such for the purpose of discussion pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to consultation with the board's bargaining, representation, and employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 60 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in this same location following that period. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Centelvier, Jim Lane, Gurb Singh, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Rachel Leers, Colleen Chandler, Tanya Wilson, and Melody Rail to join in this executive session. The session, I'll ask for the motion, the session will begin at, are nine minutes okay for a break? Do you need more than nine minutes? 7:20? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
We'll start the executive session at 7:20. Thank you for your attendance. We have come out of the executive session and will need to extend, I would like to entertain a motion to go back into the executive session for the purpose of discussions pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to consultation with the board's bargaining, representation, and employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 30 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in this same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Centelvier, Jim Lane, Gurb Singh, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Rachel Leers, Colleen Chandler, Tanya Wilson, and Melody Rail to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
I would move that, but do we, are we also not entitled to be in this for attorney-client purposes?
We can be.
I would like to include the attorney-client privileges in addition to the bargaining unit negotiations. I'd make that motion.
Second.
We will start at 8:21, and we will go 30 minutes. Thank you. Oh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have come out of the executive session, we took no action, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.